Everyone is present, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let it be known that everyone is present. And Ken Manley, Mr. Ken Manley is going to lead us in prayer and the pledge this evening.
I would like to thank you for this day. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to come together and meet and make decisions that are best for the city of Ballinger. Also, I'd like to ask you to take care of those that have been affected by the virus and hope everyone eventually get well. Thank you for this. Thank you for the opportunity. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and protect its liberty and its citizens. One to say, unencouraged, one indivisible.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, this time, this is the opportunity for the public to address council. Dialogue deliberation or discussion with council member on members on items that are not on the agenda is prohibited by law. Time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anyone have anything? Okay, we'll move along. At this time, city council may discuss and consider approval of the minutes of the July 20th, August 3rd, and August 10th, 2020 meetings.
The only things that I can see were very, very, very minor. They wouldn't affect the outcome of the decision or the statement, so I would make a motion to approve.
I'll put it in there.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Question carries, we have a principal. Okay, next item, city council will need in budget workshop for the 2021 fiscal year budget.
He survived. One more we can do. We'll see if you guys look at everything in front of you. I'm still here in a few years. And a little bit of changes, we did correct on the sanitation line where we had there before, the $96,000 over there, plus a little bit of extra, so that's been corrected. We made up for it a little bit of what we did save throughout by projecting a little more accurate who our expenses are going to be. On that snapshot, that first page, again, you got everything in order by department of what follows on the pages afterwards. And we were at about 10.6%, is what we were saying, we were going to be over what fiscal year 20 was. For fiscal year 21, we turned that out at 10.28%. And so we're looking right now at about $473,000 over what we did in fiscal year 20 with our prediction. So the things that are most influential towards the budget, I've got listed there on the right-hand side of that top part. So in the police department, there's a lot more involvement with the technology side of it. And there's some vehicle expenses that have been added through like the enterprise program and a few other things. And then in the next year, we're looking at some costly equipment upgrades for stuff that's expiring that we're probably going to have to cover. We're going to work as much on the backend of it where you're not seeing it in the budget and getting all that compensated back to us through grants and other programs that we can. And but again, we always want to predict for what the actual expenses and not what we might get back. And so that's what I'm trying to present to you is upfront, this is what we think the costs are going to be. I'm going to do everything at the backend to relieve the burden on the taxpayer throughout the year by working with department heads to get grant programs and opportunities on that in place. Do you guys want to go at this any way, shape, or form specific? You're just going to go over it like I did last week and let you guys look over and get back with me? Should I give you a copy?
Only here, grant process that we have. When we, are we presenting a figure for a possible grant that we're going to apply for, or is it just kind of higher of the flows with each one? And with that being said, when we, when we apply for the grants, do we also write down the, the cost of it compared to what is our actual expense compared to what we're going to get?
Yeah, so, and Boney, you might correct me because I don't know how the historical way that the grants have been applied when we could get them. But we would essentially bring those in on revenue side to offset those line items. And so the grant would apply in essentially the same as what the different funds do. And they would pay back into it. So we still have spent it, so it doesn't just make it disappear, so that when somebody says, why did you spend this much money? We can say, we spent this much, but we also funded it this much through a program. And then line by line, like, try to use a simple example, on a street grant, we would have a material breakdown, maybe breakdown subcontracted engineering, all the different aspects of that money where it went to each one of those positions. We would have that broken down and available, but in a snapshot, just trying to get everything together without inundating you guys here with thousands of pages of line. And it would be easy, I think, to get stuff done effectively in a timely manner. Right now, as far as what grants we have that we're working on or working towards that were directly affecting, I don't have that broken down. I'm still probably a couple weeks from getting all that compiled in and being able to start really looking, but there's significant amounts of gray money out there. Politically, you're going to see a little bit of a take up on that as well as what's available. So I want to pursue what we can because everyone who works in the larger government offices is going to want to try and influence the best way that they can.
My main thing was like, if we do it right now, I'm not a blow on this very long time. And I understand the process, but for transparency purposes for the general public, you know, if they see a $100,000 grant out there and then all of a sudden they see where we spent $10,000 or $15,000, that, you know, because most of it is okay, you get a grant, we get all that money and that's what you're using this for, but they don't understand administrative process in the background. So I'm just wondering if there's accommodations for those expenses that are just normal for grant processes?
For a lot of people, it would probably be a figure or something, but I actually think it's extremely enjoyable for me to be able to say, hey, look, I took your money and I did this with it. So yeah, I fully expect that I'm going to be doing that on a regular basis. And any private foundation grant, there's an expectation there that you do come back after you complete your grant, the film and cycle, and do a report. I know some of our grants that we, I think that's true grant, they actually want a synopsis of how we utilize the money.
Kind of all the process involved with it.
Yeah.
Whether it's the engineering or actual, how you're replacing domains or something, but lots of things, everything. But whatever project we're doing with that money, had it down there where everybody conceived the different category for a spending, is that what?
Right, yeah, that's what. And for transparency, in case someone comes up, yes, a reporter, whether it's a constituent or whatever the case may be, they have questions and we can go to them and say, okay, here's your report is lined up, you know, those break down positives.
Everything we should do with that grant money should be above par. And every person in this room should be able to be proud and go off and say, look, here's our report. I think we did really good with everybody else's money and we put it to the best use on the path on the city. And so that's something that, yeah, I think that needs to be done and I expect that they have to do that.
And my problem, here's your, many of our grants through the state or the feds requires us to come back quarterly or annually to do an audit or nothing of what we've done with the equipment or what we've spent the money on. Just like the vehicles that we get occasionally, you have to go into your financial sum, FSR is what it's called. And you have to say what she spent, if it's your final FSR, and then you have to go in and report what she used it for and has it met the target, what she targeted to do with the grant or the equipment. And like the BDP program, which is the blood group best partnership, that is a double cost to us, all we do is apply for it. And when we spend the funds out of our general, out of our line item, in the federal government, all we do is send the receipts then to them and then reimburses up to half of the cost of the body armor. And so those kind of things, it's all documented, there's paper files that work and it's all done through direct deposit. There's no, there's no handling of funds or problem to handle that contract.
And so again, on that front page, which I call my snapshot page, PD, you're looking at an increase that influences it a whole lot just based on software predictive. Almost every department, one of the big upticks on the bottom line was the hospital health insurance. And that first round I went in, I kind of sequestered myself away from everybody else just to take an almost forensic look at what the budgets were today, what we were predicting. And then throughout the last week, I've worked with department heads and with Boney to try and really get at why different departments were asking for certain line items to go off of others. So one thing that I found that with the forensic approach of predicting, it didn't really translate to the appropriate on that hospital health. So we have a figure of what each employee is allocated per month towards their health insurance and that's what that stands. So mine was all $500 or $200 per month, which over the period of the year and across all those employees. It's based on the maximum number of employees for that department that we have budgeted and on a fair, sincere of what had been utilized in the last 10 and a half months. So that influenced a little bit to bring up that cost, which I think is a phenomenal value to all of our employees. So going on to the municipal court and Judge Lillis Court, she seemed a little bit of an increase every year because she's absorbed the cost now for the undue software. And she utilizes that for some of her processing and case management. So inside of that software we're using across the city, she's having to utilize it more. And so that's where she saw a little bit of a rise that's influencing her, about $4,000 per that department rather, $4,000 per year. So other than that software, her budget only went up $60. City hall facilities, we're looking at some things in this facility that are going to be compliance issues, whether it's ADA compliance, pro compliance, things that need to be repaired or rehabilitated, and then just some enhancements that have been put off for years. I don't have a detailed breakdown of what all that is, but that's the biggest thing that's going to influence that city hall budget. As you look through each one of the pages behind, you'll see three different colors. If it's a green on the 20 versus 21 line, you're seeing a reduction compared to the 2020 budget. If it's red, it's showing an increase to the 2021 budget. And if it's yellow, that means it's simply unchanged from 2020. The non-departmental administration, you guys know this, because you guys did some voting on bringing in positions like mine, that's where you're seeing some of that influence into that budget is kind of staffing everything to the appropriate levels to make sure that the city's running efficiently and it's working to be financially transparent and diligent to what we budget for the year. So that was the biggest influence on that. Streetlights, I'm going to try and work to reduce the cost and see if we can get some more audits. I guess it's been about five or six years since we looked at the cost work for the lighting based on your usage. But what I did on streetlights to reduce it that little bit was looked at the actual usage over the past year when we slipped the use of budget and then offset it with some of that audit fee. So when you see that new line item under streetlights, that audit fee is to start looking at streetlights and other things to see if there's a more efficient product out there that we can put into place. And if I go that route with it and making a recommendation, I think I have several different grant programs that I've done before with other businesses and that could be utilized again to hopefully offset that cost. And then in the long term, we'll see a lower operating cost every year thereafter. I'm going to skip over fire department because it marginally changed, so I really don't have anything to highlight on it one way or the other. And there's just a little few administrative things that probably don't think about or really changes there. And again, the city lake park, we're looking at some increases for the RV plots or metering the water potentially in a more efficient way so that we're not having huge overages of our expected and we can't recoup. And then upgrading the electrical system for the RVs so that it's safer and more compliant. And then just making sure that everything meets the standards that it's supposed to. Animal control, I think I mentioned this a little bit last week, but biggest expense on that is going to be the replacement of the dog catcher's handling box that's on the back of the vehicle. And do you know how old that is?
Twenty years?
Yeah, it's old. I think it's one of our first, that's the first box I ever bought for animal control.
And it's worn out.
Yeah.
So we'll get as much use as we can, I guess, to make sure that.
It's not been done.
Yeah. So that's your biggest cost in animal control that we're predicting. And then there's a little bit of money in there to make sure that the facility itself is kept compliant and maybe we have it in there to do a little bit of enhancement to the facility itself. Streets and maintenance, and we've actually reduced some of the expenses in that department and the increased different lines to make sure we're covering everything efficiently. And I think a lot of the changes in there was more to the employment, to make sure that we were not over utilizing budget toward employees that weren't 100% necessary. Trimmed that a little bit, which reduced that line by $112,000. We brought it back in to designate the superintendent separate from the maintenance employees. And mainly just on a clarify of that aspect of it, so that we can track what those salaries are and how to make sure they're done appropriately. The refuse and sanitation, again, I brought that down by $96,000 for that catch-up money that we were doing to make up for what we were behind on that. So that section of the streets and sanitation budget did reduce compared to what we should put that last week. And I think as you guys look at financial reports in fiscal year 21, we're probably going to bring back it and be encoded in its own department so that it doesn't unduly influence the streets department too much. And just increase the amount of transparency tracking and control that we have over sanitation as we move forward. On the parks, we increased that because we feel there's a need to make sure that restaurants and some of the other facilities there are compliant, mainly so that they're just not being overutilized without having a foundation in place to support it. And also for things like ADA compliance and just general safety. The pool is going to increase again. I was informed that the community facility and the bathrooms, and I'll probably need to have some attention taken to them, and just general maintenance. We are going to, in this budget year, be buying a dolphins as some that's going to clean the pool more efficiently and controlling my algae more, which should keep our capital costs low since we're not being impolite of the bio type of element inside of that water. So that should last us quite a good period of time. I don't think it's a commercial grade.
That should also reduce the staining in the bottom of the pool and around edges during the winter when the bees fall in there. It's difficult to get them out before they do their thing. And then that was part of the problem this year is it looked really bad, the water was fine, but it looked kind of bad when you looked at it because the staining, it was hurting, that's just looked bad. That should reduce that aspect.
Right. I guess the diving board also needs a little bit of retention possibly this next year. So Boney and I actually shopped that around and looked at some cost-saving avenues that we could go. So I think working with the members of the pool, we can probably find a more efficient or economic avenue that's still safe and we can fix that without having to pull and place all the pedestals and everything. So we just need to look at it a little bit closer, but I feel like we can work a little bit less than what we were anticipating on things like that. The community center, we saw a little bit of a reduction in there, mainly we've got the phone costs going down. We want to try and make sure that as we move forward, that the facility is maintained to the contract level by the people who are utilizing that facility. We've got a deposit in place that's more than sufficient to make sure that everything's taken care of and refreshed to the way it was when people used the facility. We just need to be a little bit more on our toes about making sure that we're checking on that facility and not having to absorb cost because of people who don't want to keep up with themselves after they use that facility. So I'm predicting that we can reduce some of our costs on that building by making sure that people hold their end of the contract and keeping it clean up to date when they sign the contract with us to utilize that facility.
But is the deposit fee is used? Do they get any of that back or?
They usually get it back if it's.
If it's a.
I have no problem. I only give that back to everybody that uses it. There's, it just did, we have to do a bunch of work. That's what that deposit is there for, is to make sure that we're not having to take on a burden that isn't something that we incurred on ourselves.
Do we know a checklist or anyone that knows to walk through to where they cleaned and?
We have a checklist.
We just need to, like I said, be a little bit more diligent on our end of making sure that we'll have it just fine on the way back.
Well, only with the department attendant who wanted to, the one that currently ten inspecting after, or who was good at that.
It was the street department.
Street department.
Couldn't bear it.
Wouldn't that make sense that the industry clawed or just somebody since they were there? I mean, I think.
The department manager just a minute, we could go back to the pool for just a second. On the certified pool operator, is that going to be listed like a stipend for a current city employee after they're trained, or how does that?
Yes, sir, I've already spoken to a couple of our current staff members and that already are kind of inclined to power up the chemicals into the water system and they've agreed to get that as soon as we can.
Agreed, are we funding the, to get them chartered?
Yes, sir.
To get them certified.
Yeah.
So that, so that basically would be a stipend.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There'll be two.
There'll be two of them. In that way, it forms the organization, perhaps, on the nose, we've always had, it was happening for us.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's perfectly all right. And we're jumping over here back to administrative departments where I was at next. We're going to see some increases again for the hospital health insurance, which is a calculation issue to make sure that we were appropriately basing off of the number of employees in the department. And so that's why that one changed, but I was actually over from the one that I presented a week ago. And so we came down a little bit on that. And you're going to see savings on the telephone line, you're going to see savings on the computer being inserted, so that's going to be covered a little bit in there, whatever they're doing when we get it to place. We do have in there to make sure that everybody's appropriately compensated, which hopefully means that we can get some pay raises to people in the administration throughout the period of the year. Legal notices, we are going up a little on that just based on catch trends. We need to send them out a little bit more efficiently, so we're going to have an increase in that. And auditing in both the administrative department and in with the sewer token for water. So you'll see a $15, $15,000 high margin for both of those for the auditing. And we should be kind of moving the results back on that.
Then we got two years.
Okay. So that's what that big increase on that was. And then with the number of candidates that we've had, we might have one more last week after for the race, so we'll predict that we're going to have to have a runoff election, so we use the election calls.
Yeah, because a runoff election, you run about three grants.
You know, it's not, it's not the actual production of the election, that cost of programming of machines that you have to pay for that for each entity, which I think is a crock, but anyway, that's, that's the way it's been ever since they've gone electronic.
Yeah.
You know, and it's the same program, even there, they're literally creating the entities every time they have an election. But I mean, that's my personal opinion, but anyway.
If you keep us going on rentals and just say balance.
Yeah.
Water, water treatment supply, I think we've worked really good into this budget. We're actually can see a slight lighting up the burden against the city on it while increasing a whole lot of what it can do for the city.
Speaking of that, I want to be sure that we're not cutting ourselves short on being able to get supplies and everything. I know over the last several years, they have cut that budget considerably. And so I want to be sure that we are staying in the place where we have enough money in that line item, especially of our water treatment.
We did, we, we've gone over that, over that, over that, and there's still quite a bit of buffer in the chemicals and in the contract lab services. There's buffer there for all that stuff.
What about the equipment, the pumps and stuff like that?
We've, we've looked at that and looking consistently at, I think we're still, we've got enough of a buffer there to, to handle and handle what it comes up with.
I just want to be sure because I know that cut that budget drastically for several years and I didn't want to get to a place where all of a sudden we're in big debt because X pumps went out from the river in a whole kind of a place.
Oh, there's one spot that we did try to jump ahead of the eight ball, and that's on that line 5120. And what was the name of that before? It was raw water transportation. We'd like to change the name of that to certification and compliance. So what that's going to do is allow us to budget for the five-year and three-year certifications for the tabletop testing, for the drop contingency plan, for the chlorine mitigation plan, and the dam certification. So those four, maybe one or two other certifications. So it'll actually be divided amongst a three- or five-year period. And if it's a properly budgeted for when those do fit, we need to make sure that we're at what, if we ever thought about a year where this all hit on the exact same year, that we have the budget to cover those. So I predict that that one's always going to be below budget. And so if we need to make sure that we have a reserve that's going to, I don't want to say artificially inflate the budget every single year, but it's going to give us a little bit of a buffer that's a significant line item that covers if we had to make up for from one place to another through a few years for that to happen. Water distribution and, and water distribution and sewer, probably the two biggest things that are gonna impact those, we're gonna break down between the two of them, some predicted expenses for the cost of material while we have the road open during the road project under the grant and replacing the water main and sewer main in those areas. We don't have the exact numbers or material cost or total distances or anything. So, we use a slightly high number per foot and we're predicting between five and six thousand feet of main to be replaced during that project. So, I split that equitably between water distribution and sewer. And so, you can see that cost is actually, I believe. We got fifty one twenty nine, the line item. And you'll see it's increased for grant projects. You'll see a similar limitation under sewer. So, that's where that additional cost in the last week that we reworked the budget came in to make sure that we're prepared for that. But there's going to be a second year of that high, but we ended at a sixty forty split. Because we have a timeline that we have to get that grant finished within. So, we're looking sixty percent of sixty five percent of that work needs to be completed in fiscal year twenty one with the balance completed in fiscal year twenty two. So, if we're under budget, we can stop out the material throughout fiscal year twenty one for what needs to be completed in fiscal year twenty two with whatever we have left.
Definitely gonna be, my next question was, will we be able to go out and buy the materials and stop all of our project while we're now? Whereas while we're preparing for this, will we have it on hand? And also sometimes when you do that, you can go out and get a lower price for it because you're buying it from bulk.
We're, we're looking into that right now. I think I've had multiple conversations with the core main and a couple of others of ours just for that very reason. And we're looking at our line items as we get closer to the end of this budget year, we're going up to encumber that. And, and that we have those pieces of material ready to go once they're finished.
Will that include the base and the asphalt?
Uh, we're trying to get some of the ad from Vulcan to the top to try to get the mic to get that online down.
Sometimes I know there's been a case where it can be considerably cheaper to buy it, particularly during the end of the year when they're getting bigger, beginning to reduce their paving and stuff.
And what we're also looking to do is some of that lower hanging fruit, if you will, in the places that we can do blade patching this year. And then we have the money left over, we'll get some aggregate in and that way we're ahead for the main project in all twenty one. So, we're trying to get some of it knocked out here so that we're not having to do both projects next year.
Right.
We're doing blade patching and what we can here.
That's answering your question. Exactly. You're doing exactly what I was asking now. When we get the metal, getting everything together now to do blade patching, but we have.
Yes, sir.
It was more initially like on those line items that in the sewer and water, we're not just predicting the length of the pipe. And we took into consideration the cost per cubic yard, P gravel, Tracy tape, the pipe, and even some tapping, tap expenses for T taps. So, we tried to, that's where the artificial number comes up is that we wanted to go over to that. If you just look at the straight cost of pipe at two, four dollars a foot, that would be insufficient for the whole project. So, we're trying to be way more predictive than just a single aspect of that.
Yeah, because there's more, there's more to it than just the pipe. The more tax and stuff like that that have to be considered, they can prove that's efficient. That's good.
And I also added in water distribution, technology expenses. I'm trying to add a technology fee into almost every department over the next few years. The reason behind that is we have a very difficult time utilizing some, I don't want to say antiquated because we've used the lineups very well. So, we hope everything to be more transparent. So, when we go to search through one of the line items, when, when you guys want to know where the money went, when somebody comes off the street and wants to know where the money went, so we can more precisely say, this is exactly where the money went without kind of trace back through receipts and coding and all of that and delivering something that's not just straight up with that transparent. So, where I've got like new line items, that's, that's what it's all about is making us more transparent so that I don't mind someone wild. I want everybody to be able to look at it and say, I'm confident that they did what was right and honest by our money. And if I can do it in a simple form instead of a super complex form, that's what I'm trying to do is build something that works for everybody. So, input from all of you, even from citizens, I, I'm all for it. Water administration, you're gonna see a decrease. The decrease on the, on the top, you'll see we had a decrease from twenty fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty one. Because we're budgeting for two clerks instead of three. And same on the hospital health insurance, we see a savings there because we're budgeting for two instead of three. And that's all of our relief that we can work efficiently with two. There's some training in the schools cost went up seven thousand. We're gonna cross train some of the regular administration and secretarial and non-administrative personnel. When they come in to do the training for that fund view on the utility billing, we're all kind of gonna sit on that so that we can all step in and do those clerical duties if we need to provide effective coverage during window hours. So.
So, our basic reduction in the clerks is gonna be to like software. Being able to have something more efficient to be able to bring up.
Yeah.
In their job description and capacity, they'll be able to do it without having to have multiple people do it all at one time.
Correct.
Got you.
On the sewer, again, you're seeing capital expenditures and sewer mains maintenance. We tucked everything kind of together in there for budget to cover everything while the roads are open. So, that's your big change in there, but we balanced out and capital expenditures a good bit and applied that money towards the cost of the sewer mains maintenance. And that's essentially sewer main replacement during that project. So, we increased that. We used that number that we came up with, that sixty five percent for fiscal year twenty one expenses. And then added six thousand, four hundred seventy seven dollars to that to come up with that thirty six thousand, four hundred twenty five dollars. So, that's what, we didn't want to leave ourselves based on what we historically have used for maintaining sewer lines and just budget for that new project. We wanted to be able to budget for the new project and be able to keep on doing what we've been doing in the past. So, that's how that number came out, thirty thousand dollars. On the airport, we shifted several things around. On gas or on plats, there's nothing really out there we're utilizing a huge amount that comes under regular scheduled maintenance type deals. So, we reduced that a lot because that's just high money up. And every vehicle that goes out there is coming from another department. So, it's gonna absorb some of those costs across the network. And it just, we didn't feel like it'd be that high. Minor tools, same thing. We don't have a dedicated person working out there. And the tools in the past were probably being used for retaining the hangers in the house. The biggest expenses that we've had over the last fiscal year have been the expenses for water and the expenses for electric. I don't have the exact breakdown of what went to the removers, hangers, fuel pump, et cetera versus the house. But I'm going to prudently look into what those costs were and as we move forward with a new tenant, if we go that route at that house, and we're going to make sure that they're being built for the costs instead of the city absorbing the cost for the utilities at that house. Because up until now, we had with the most recent tenants. So, you'll see a reduction in what our actual costs are there, hopefully significantly next year.
So, up until now, we were paying for all the utilities for anyone who lived in that airport?
I can only speak to the last fiscal year and the most recent tenant. A formal lease was never drafted. So, the expenses of whatever rent that we lost, we occurred, the maintenance of the facility. And I thought there were some repairs that were done to it that we paid out of pocket. There were some tools that were done to it or applied to it. The totality of the electric bill and the totality of the water bill, we absorbed a hundred percent of that cost. So, overall, we reduced the transfer to the general fund now. And applied it back in upfront. We can increase the amount that gets transferred out of that as we balance revenues against expenses throughout the year. I think it's more prudent upon us to look at the end of year expenses and before we commit to transferring X number of dollars out of the revenue from that towards the general fund. But I do expect that with these cost saving measures and the revenues that the airport is able to generate, that we can either take those, apply them to expanding that facility with new key hangers, upgrading a fuel maintenance tracking system so that we can make sure we're charging out efficiently. We may be able to draw more people in with a little bit of marketing in the airport. And there's a book that's funny to look at. It's called the hundred dollar hamburger. And I came across it a year, years ago, but it was designed just to take different businesses in different parts of the U.S. And they distributed that out to different private pilots all over. There were little traveling clubs that they'd fly into somewhere, they'd go to a staple restaurant. They figured about a hundred dollars per person is what it would cost for that hamburger on weekend. But you get really big clubs and I think we could really increase the amount of traffic at that airport while increasing the visibility of balance or what we have to offer. So, one of the things we need there is not having a Saturday to call somebody up there and fill it. So, I think looking at a self managed fueling option would be prudent and it would be something that's not exorbitantly priced.
That's, that was the problem before. I think we had that and it was costing us more to have it out there for them to swipe a card through there than it was in the revenue we were getting off of it.
Right.
So, we had to stop that because it's becoming, uh, very too expensive for the city.
We also need to explore options for the water that people get out there, right?
Yeah.
Because it's on a trust basis, basically.
There is one of the RV part. Metering out the water, making sure that people are paying the appropriate amount is definitely something we, we have brought to our attention this week that we're looking at. We're looking at cost effective options that are both equitable to us and fair to the user. But a straight ticket system on goodwill and honor doesn't seem to be working for us. So, yeah.
Speaking of that, because we did a word of that at the park and at the lake, we've done pretty well this year, right? We've done pretty good. So, I'm very proud of that.
Like I said through roughly everything that's in there, I'm either overwhelmed or enticed you guys to ask me questions or not. Is there anything that I can answer for you as best as I can while I'm here?
One of the things that I had a question about annoying is the infrastructure of the city in a way is kind of dispersed now. But they're on the very first page and you've got all the departments. How many department heads do we actually have that accommodate these positions? Or let me put it this way, how many department heads do we have that are monitoring these particular line items?
So, we, we did have a few department heads that covered multiple departments. I, I can't even give you, I can sit here and tally out roughly. We've got eighteen departments that are on this packet. And I think out of those eighteen, I don't know why the number twelve is popping to my mind, but I think it makes shared duties of some department heads that would probably be close. And I can definitely get you a solid report of what that is.
Well, basically, you are like questions coming down to with the number of department heads, everything that's going on in the budget itself. Do they have the capacity or the access to be able to look at their budgets? More than likely through our software or at least their written one. And how often do they review it? How often do they come back to the city council or at all? So, that they maintain their capacity to be able to keep within their budget. And if something will be done, they go through the formalities of being able to even auto validate.
That is something that is currently being developed because in times past, that has not been the case. There's been one person for the most part developing, managing, overseeing everything that would alter the budget. This is the first time that we've actually invited the department heads in. There was one, two, three, four, five, six, I think six or seven of us spoken that were in that meeting. And it was the first time any of them had ever had an opportunity to even see what a budget request sheet looked like. And we had to actually spend time with some of them to explain the budget principles and how to figure, you know, for cost increases, where are you gonna need to add, where are you need to reduce and so on and so forth. That's how we've got this document where it is today is, but this is the first time I've actually from, from talking to staff. This is the first time that this has been able to happen.
Well, that was kind of my main question because in my opinion, I think there needs to be accountability between the department heads for their expenditures.
And where we're going with this, once we get this document in place in the operational, it's my goal that, what I'm accustomed to is that as monthly bills are paid and we get a financial report finalized, like the things are taken care of for a month or two months behind, they, they go out to each one of the department heads and they can see as close as we can get them to a current state of their budget. And so, they can see, well, I need to, I need to scale back on this and wire for doing this. And that's how we also internal audit, wait a minute, we're discussing from and they come back in and see who, who covered a particular purchase to a particular line item. And so, it's internal audit in between our annual office.
Well, I think, you know, this is, this is part of the problem that was happening before. There wasn't a realization of the budget for, especially from the city council. And I would personally think it would be expedient and prudent to have a budget report at least once a month. Even if it's just a synopsis.
That's part of the joint. City manager, that's coming back to us.
Right.
It wasn't being done.
Right. It wasn't being done before and I think that's one of the reasons that it just went show all, you know, where because it's, it wasn't being, it wasn't being monitored. It was, it wasn't being.
And you can ask and ask and ask and still don't get it. So.
I think we're in, I think we're in a position now where this is all changing and it is a, a time of change. It's not gonna be something that'll happen overnight. It's gonna be procured because it's not that difficult to do. It may not be as accurate as we want it. I mean, I appreciate what you're doing because this brings a whole new light to, to me, especially in, in the budget, budget review. Because whether you go line item by line item or whether you go department by department, I mean, you still get an idea of what is being expended through the city, city's funds. Because, you know, the whole end result is the taxpayers were wanting to pay for all this. And again, transparency is, is utmost. If we don't know where it's going and why it's going, it's a heck of a time trying to be transparent.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're finally beginning to be able to move forward.
Right.
We said we've gone all down and stuff. Everybody wants to do stuff that happened previously. And now that's over, we can move forward and that's what's happening. And now that's over, we can move forward and that's what's happening.
Right, yeah. I, I, like I said, I definitely appreciate this because this does give us as council members representing these districts to give them some, an idea if they've got a question, you know, that they're going like, well, Chris, I don't know. We can go back and say, okay, if we do have a report, I'd be glad to give it to you or I'll look back on it and answer your question in a legitimate manner.
Well, I definitely don't ever want you guys to feel like I'm just ramming something out of your throat that you have to stop me, so.
I don't know. In fact, I perfectly appreciate what you've done and all the work because you spent hours and hours and hours on this and going back and reviewing things that's happened in the past and brought it up to date where we now know where we are.
It's such a strong one.
I appreciate the hard work you've done.
To the question you started out with about department heads, can you flip over to that police department section? So like the very first page. So you see my pretty little colored column that shows increases, decreases, and unchanged. And to the right of that where it says twenty-one requ- ARQ dollars. So that was the dollar amount for each line item that that department head requested. So I did present it to you guys, I just didn't explain it to you, I'm sorry for that. So if you want to compare, for example, the, the very first one, the chief salary versus what I proposed for 2021. And I projected an actual increase in that line item above what they did just to represent what the city's intent for each department did. And where I might have seen a forecastable deficiency or excess on what the department head was requesting compared to what I thought was appropriate. Some of the departments have, have way more involvement than others. And that has absolutely nothing to do with the competency or quality of that department head. I have a task over the next year to make sure when we come here that I've trained them in addition to what they're already doing on how to track their expenses better and how to predict their expenses better. Because if I can get six, eight, ten, twelve people that can work at the efficiency, like, well, even if there's a whole lot of experience in predicting standing who's very involved in this budget. If I can get them all on track and learning how to do this predictive accounting, it's going to make finding out easier. And then I can focus on other things that enhance the financial well-being, the health of our finances, and the health and well-being of all of our employees.
I totally agree with your methodology of this because, you know, there's always a chance somebody is going to quit, retire, or move somewhere else, and then someone comes in and they don't have a clue what's going on unless the evidence is there.
Right.
If they've been accurate and complete accounting in that particular part, which everyone may be, they're going to have a better idea of what's going on and the expectations that are from them rather than just throw them into the pit and watch them for the lines and chill them up and.
Well, I, I hope that they feel pride in it too. I think when you can see exactly why you did it this way, I think every one of us can have more pride and hold our head up and not be worried about being asked questions.
Councilman Riley, looks, one thing I wrote here is that I would remind myself and will work on this in other budgets that I've helped develop in, in the past, is that as you go into each department, it's got a department name that it has a flow chart with it. So it, it labels out how many you have in the total department and what their roles and responsibilities are. I know probably make it a little bit more user-friendly for things.
Yeah, that's good.
And Brian and I can start working a little bit on a flow chart. This was more of a focus and an operational flow, but I, that is something that we're working against you guys as well.
I think, I think the more, I mean, you don't want to get bogged down in detail to the point that it's ludicrous. But there is a certain amount of the detail that needs to be there for people to know what their expectations are and the data that they're dealing with. If they really want to take care of their position as a department head, then they'll be interested in that and feel that that's part of their capacity, meaning a valued employee of the city, that they are able to manage those things if it can give them and explain to them and show you, oh, this is where we're going, this is what we need to do, and rest is how we want to do it.
And, uh, some people see the love that this is what money is then.
Well, that's true too, that we check my balances, you know, is that over there?
Beyond that also is when we adopt the new hamburger, that will be a tough job description for everyone. And each person will be, have one of the hamburgers and acknowledge they've got one and they will know what the job description is and what they're supposed to be doing.
And to, to address, you know, comment about that. I was extremely familiar when I had the office supply plan here with schools. And every one in particular area at the end of the year, they had money left over in their budget. Well, they would say, okay, what can we buy? You know, they just bring me an amount of money and they say, okay, what can I spend so that they don't decrease my budget? Okay, now that, to me, it was good as a business person because that was money in my pocket. But to me, as a taxpayer, if I were in that district, and the district wasn't here, it was another district, then I would have been a little bit kind of apprehensive about it for the fact, okay, if they're going to have, say, and they're going to be a large amount, but I mean a thousand dollars is a large amount in this case. So if that person had a thousand dollars left over in their budget, they were going to make sure they were going to get all their budget back the next year because if they didn't spend it, they were going to get reduced. And I think the mentality on that overflows to everybody else in the fact that that's not what we're doing here. If we're efficient enough where we don't need that money each time, then you'll need to keep the same budget or you'll reduce the budget and become more efficient because this is what you got because you've proven you can do your job without having to spend a heck of a whole lot of money.
Right.
This is because the main cause of it is, is not the.
If we get in that position, we're going to build our reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. I don't think that's a personal deal, but I.
I don't think anyone in the government has a big question in any matter.
That's, that's one thing that, that we have, that I've learned with several agencies about that. Is that if more city managers and controllers have taken the philosophy of rewarding, if you will, department heads for managing the budgets appropriately and having that positionally money there. We're not going to penalize by paying them, but we're going, we're going to have that legitimate conversation. It's okay, why was this expense down, you know, fifty percent, eighty percent from the previous year? And they can honestly say, well, we didn't actually have to use that, but we can see that it's going to be coming up in the next year or two. And so you don't, you don't recommend for not spending it, but you have to have those revenues available for them when that expense does come up. And so that's, that's why we have those budget retreats and those workshops to see what's going on with their budgets and take that into account. If they don't need it, then they sacrifice it. If they need it, it's coming up and they justify it, it saves. But I agree.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Mayor, council, before we go into the adjournment, I would like to, I know it's not on the agenda if I didn't give the manager's report in. But we had a meeting today and so it wouldn't have been on the agenda in, in time anyway. But we've had an opportunity to sit down and visit at great length with our representatives from Corr Maine who are assisting us in a very big way with the dilemma that we are experiencing with our water meters and our ups and downs of billing. And we are working diligently trying to figure out what has gone on. We know one of the big things is, is that we are paying the price for a lack of training. We had information, knowledge that has walked out the door on their own or asked to. And they did not share that information on how to do certain things. And so what has happened unfortunately is our citizens are bearing the brunt of a lack of communication from some former staff members. However, we are, they spent the day working with some of our staff and teaching them how to properly read meters. We have discovered that meters that are being read manually and it galls me no end, they were supposed to have been replaced um, three years ago or better. And we still have a mixture of old analog meters that are still in the ground that were supposed to be replaced by the smart meters. And so we are working to remedy that. We are also working with them on a prolioration study to pick up the parts of Ballenger that do not currently have the smart meter at their disposal. So we'll be working on that. The proliation study is free of charge. Now there will be cost in some equipment and locating a tower or another location for the, what's, what's the, what do they call that? The, the, that receives all the, the reading data.
Collector.
I'm sorry.
Collection system.
It's a collector's, what it is. And then once it receives in the collector, it's bounced back in the city hall and it helps us with our billing. So this is, we're working diligently trying to find that. We're finding the older meters that are, that we're finding some issues in the numbers. And we will be trying to get on those as quickly as we possibly can to get those meters changed out. So that's going to be, it's going to be a chin-on-the-chin of the city for purchasing some additional meters. We're probably going to take it on the chin for the loss of possible sales. However, once we get these meters back in place, the citizens are going to see a more accurate accounting of their consumption. Another thing that we're going to be working on and that we were told about is called API. API, we can find any, look at any vendor that we want to that will work with Neptune meters. And basically it allows the, the resident to be able to set their account and they can watch their consumption. And if they see an unusual spike in their consumption, they can be ahead of the curve and try to address a possible leak before it goes a whole month and they're surprised that they're really big water. So that's something that we're going to be looking at very aggressively.
Can you have a guess in that on the number of meters? Well, you don't want to step into that.
Well, what we're going to do is we're looking at, this is, this is the issue. And it's, I've only been here six weeks and I'm embarrassed that we're like, that we're in this situation. But I can say that we're probably in the neighborhood of about a hundred to maybe two hundred meters that are needing to be looked at. And high in probably three hundred, that takes them the five eighths meters up to the two inch meters we made. We're having to get into the accounting side of things and look at our Texas water development account. There were, believe there were some funds still there that we can utilize to help absorb that cost. But at the end of the day, from what I have been told by Corr Maine and some others, former staff members that I do believe are wanting to help us out in a situation that we're in. We owe it to the taxpayers. I don't care if it's cost us in sales or, we owe it. It just, yeah, I, I'm sorry. I just, I don't like that some of these things had, I had left unchecked. The inventory control is all personally non-existent. And that is being addressed at this time. But we're actively, everything that we get in is being audited and documented. If it has a serial number, it's being written there. So that we can account for where everything goes. It all comes back, it all comes back to transparency.
It was originally when we installed the, the digital meters, where we allocated or purchased a certain amount and they just weren't installed.
Somewhere along the way, what tends to happen, not just here but other municipalities, is if you come while you're out putting these new meters in there and you come across a location that is inactive, has nobody in it, then bypass it. And tend to, what's supposed to happen is, is when it, when they come in to put their deposit in and activate the account, the work order goes out and that crew goes out there and replaces the meter and they start fresh. And that has not been happening. There, there's just, there's been a lot of stuff, well, we thought they did or we thought we did and we can't find the documentation anywhere. And so all I can do at this point is start from here. And we work together as a team to make it better. And if somebody wants to be mad, they can be mad at me and talk to me about it and I'll listen to you and I'll have empathy for you, I understand. And we're going, we're going to put our best foot forward and we're going to shine.
Is, is there an inventory? That's amazing. That's not any point is if we take part and then they weren't installed, are they hanging out somewhere in warehouse with desk left at home? Or are they just, are they, was just a?
As soon as this came to light and I was handed some six pages of smart meters that have no addresses tied to them. In the neighborhood of about two hundred and fifty meters to be exact. Some have readings, some do not. And so the do not are the ones we're looking at, looking for in warehouse out here or stores at the airport. We did find some of them that are here that were defective. That will be turned in and have warranty worked on them because they, the smart meters have a ten-year warranty on them. However, and in the name of transparency, we started asking some really hard questions and we had, well, we heard. And I said, okay, what did you hear? And what we heard was is that when a smart meter came out of the ground and put it in, it's no count thrown away. For every one of those that got thrown away, uh, if there's a dollar. About a hundred and eighty-five dollars apiece.
So another question is, and I don't want to beat this horse dead, but I mean, it sounds like a lot of stuff that is now popping up that maybe, well, I don't, I didn't know what probably what.
None of y'all were doing this.
When, when did the project actually begin?
Four years ago.
That sounds familiar to me, but mine was, I knew they installed one in the final point half.
It was a four-year ago project that started and they were to do that over a period of time. And as they wore out or need to be replaced with warranty work or whatever. But the fact remains is, is some, something happened somewhere and so now we're playing that for this. We just wanted accountability, as you know, and I can assure you, that's been addressed.
So I, I have a question, sorry, Mike, I didn't interrupt you. Because we're kind of low on people right now to just go out and traverse our community to find these meters. If there's anything that I can do, I can't speak for everybody, but if there's anything that you need help with.
Well, we appreciate that. Once we, we're going to be working diligently, I think this is about as, the budget is at the point of, we're ready to present you what they proposed, the budget for your adopt, your review and adoption. We will also be moving forward with the tax rate, as I shared with y'all last week. We were looking at the various options when we were pursuing the fifty-four. So we'll be coming at you with that. But in the interim, while we're meeting those timelines and really our, our public notices, I myself will be wearing some, I'll be dressing down a little bit more than this. And we'll start learning the routes and walking the routes and finding meters and seeing what's there, photographing those meters so that we can have a, a better idea of where we need to start and, and getting this addressed. So, um, it's, it's not, we'll be, we'll be better for it in the long run. It's not close to right now. I don't like sharing, you know, putting this out there right now because there's nothing that none of you in this room could have known about, you wouldn't have known about. And so, uh, and to blame it on a lone person is irrelevant. It's just, it doesn't make any difference. It's what, it is what it is, we're going to pick up and we're going to work from this point forward. Uh, the passes behind us, we need to focus on where we're at now and where we're heading.
Exactly. Move ahead.
Thank you.
Yes. So that's all I have.
I appreciate your diligence, your hard work. Certainly. Stay out. We're going forward now.
Marching forward. Anybody else got anything to say before we adjourn?
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks.
All righty.